I just will community development block rant for the public hearing.
I'm going to read a few things about the CDBG program here so that everybody understands so it gets time for public comment. If you have any ideas that you'd like to bring forth, you'll at least understand some of the down rules of what applies and what doesn't apply for the community development block rant. First of all, these are like the goals and objectives of the CDBG program. It's a federal program. It's administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Titusville is an entitlement community. Projects must meet one of the three national objectives. The first objective, it has to benefit low to moderate income persons. Seventy percent of the funds must benefit low to moderate income. Specific areas must be fifty-one percent low to moderate income. The money can be used for eliminations of slums and blight, and it must show an urgent need such as a tornado or some kind of flood disaster. Performance under previously funded CDB program years, here's a few examples: street wiking, new curbs, handicap accessible corners, storm sewer installation, fire equipment purchases, blighted property demolitions, three since twenty-eleven, oh, I'm sorry, thirty-one since twenty-eleven demolitions have been done with CDBG money. Street lights, wastewater treatment plan upgrades, East Walmond Street Bridge construction, Burgess Park Community splash pad. Total amount of the twenty-nineteen CDBG funds is two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand five-hundred-and-four dollars. Eligible activities would include housing, rehab, street reconstruction, storm, sanitary sewer installation, demolition, removal of architectural barriers, historical preservation, parks, recreational facilities, public and community facility renovations, fire equipment purchases, and things of those nature. We also have to put out a three-year plan that would include two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one. It's required to be submitted with the application. Now, if you want to view any of these, they're already posted out on the previous years. It's available on the city's website or at City Hall. At this time, we'll take public comment. Anybody who has any things they'd like to see the money used for, let us know. One of the things that we have discussed up here at the last meeting, we found out that rehabbing the fire department so that we can get the new aerial truck in is eligible for that funding. So that is a project that we are considering. We have to raise that roof probably eighteen inches in that, in that, on behalf of the fire department really, to get it in because one door takes up half of the department. But anyone else has any ideas at all, please, please state them. You know, this is part of the process.
We're looking for ideas. Okay, hearing none. We're going to close the public hearing. We're going to call to order the work session. We're going to stand for the invocation and also the punch allegiance. Heavenly Father, we need you. Our town needs you. We invite you into our meeting. We invite you in to helping us make the wise decisions for this community. Lord, please open our ears and eyes of understanding and help us, Father, to do the very best that we can. For everything that you do, we'll give your name the honor and the glory. In Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll.
Mr. Edelman?
Here.
Mr. Frazier?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here. After last week's work session, we had an executive session regarding a personality issue. Is there a moment, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as prepared?
So.
Who said that? Bill?
I'll start with that, ma'am.
And Donald? Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-eighth two thousand nineteen as submitted and placed on file?
Motion to accept the minutes, ma'am.
Donald, or Dawn and Bill? Comments, questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Public participation pertaining to agenda items with a minimum of thirty minutes, a timeline limit of five minutes per individual speaker, city taxpayers. Comments or questions? Moving on to the two thousand eight city financial audit. We have with us this evening Natalie Heberline.
I got it right.
You got it right.
And Stephen Paul. They are with Felix and Bloker, and we thank them for coming, and I'm going to turn it over to you folks. There is the mic. It's turned on. It's turned on, and if anyone can't hear, please raise your hand because it's important that you hear what they have to say tonight. I'll turn it over to you.
All right, sounds good. We handed out a presentation which is basically a summary of the financial statement loop bound copy, so it's a little easier to get some of the highlights and some of the figures from there. It's trying to find them throughout the stuff, so a little different than we've done in the past. The first slide is the audit objective. That's the understand the entity and internal controls, test the significant accounts, express an opinion on the financial statements. In our areas of focus change from year to year, whether it be new audit areas, ongoing projects, changes over in staff, or any GASB implementation of new pronouncements and stuff like that. Next slide talks more about the audit objective, and that's the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements as a whole in accordance with GAAP, and also the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control over those financial statements. Next slide, our responsibilities are to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards, which is a higher level of compliance due to certain funding sources requiring that level of review. And then express opinions on the financial statements based on that audit. So our audit results, your opinion is that the financial statements as a whole, including the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and the added remaining fund information are presented fairly and on material respects the financial position of the city of Titusville as of December thirty-first two thousand eighteen. We also noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies during our audit procedures performed. Other required communications to the board, we noted no material past adjustments, no difficulties in performing the audit, and no disagreements with management. Next slide, we'll start hitting some of the figures as of December thirty-first two thousand eighteen. The balance sheet of the general fund will start with. We had total assets of nine-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, liabilities and deferred inflows of two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, and that left us with fund balance of seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. Now, the next slide here, comparing some information for you guys relative to some of the other surrounding municipalities. So you can kind of see where their general fund balance compares to yours. We only had the seventeen figures from the most recently filed DCD reports of those areas, but it's still going to kind of tell you how you compare to those related to our population also and the mileage rate, so that's there for your review. The next slide shows the revenues and expenditures by each fund. And we'll start there with the general fund. We had total operating revenue of three million six-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, total operating expenses of four million three-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, sale of fixed assets of ten thousand, operating transfers in of seven-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, and that brought us to a change in net position of ninety thousand to the good. In capital projects, we closed out that fund there, so you can see there's a decrease in the net position of two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, which was transferred back to the funds that originally transferred the money in. In the water fund, we had operating revenue of one million twelve thousand, operating expense of five-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, interest income of twenty-five hundred, and net operating transfers out of three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, and that brought us to a positive change in net position in the water fund of ninety-one-thousand. In the sewer fund, we had operating revenue of one million nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, operating expense of one million one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, interest income of seventy-seven-hundred, interest expense twenty-four thousand, and net operating transfers out of about seventy-eight thousand, and that brought us to a positive change in net position of six-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand. In the refuse fund, we had total operating revenue of four-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, operating expense of three-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand, interest income of eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, and operating transfers out of seventy-five thousand, which brought us to a positive change in net position of twenty-five thousand. So in total, as a whole, the city had a positive change in net position of six-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand. You can see there the operating transfers in and out, zeroed out because they're all between the funds there, so it doesn't really have any impact on the total bottom line. And the operating transfers that we did note there, to the ones from the capital projects are, most of them went to the sewer fund as we noted before, because that was the money that they had in there for capital projects that we didn't spend yet, so it was moved out once that capital projects fund's closed. And the other transfers from the other proprietary funds to the general fund were based on cost, personnel costs of general fund employees for various proprietary fund-related activities, so. The next slide there is the two thousand eighteen, some pension information. We'll start with the police pension. We had a net pension liability of three million two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, sixty-two percent funded. It consisted of about thirty-three members, and the two thousand eighteen city contribution that wasn't covered by state aid was about three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand.
Steve, I'm going to stop you for a minute.
Sure, no problem.
If you don't mind. Larry, how many years have you been managing the city?
Eight years last week.
Eight years. Do you remember what the percentage of funding at that time when you came on board? Was it forty-nine percent?
I just looked it up. Honestly, I can't say I don't know.
But it's been climbing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, much better.
It's not where we want it to be, but it's climbing. Okay, go on. You can check that out, Natalie?
Should have that number. Back in fourteen, it was sixty-three percent. So it's sixty-four percent now, but that, a lot of that has to do with the bad November and December of two thousand eighteen that we had, because investments took a huge hit. So right now, it's probably more up towards the seventy percent range than it was in seventeen, so.
I'd just like to see the figure from the time, just eight years.
Yeah, we'd have to see. Yeah, it was, we'd have to go back. But we just started tracking the net pension liability and it come into play till the fourteen, fifteen year where we're reporting this stuff actually in the financial statements now, so we'd have to find some other information.
Go ahead, Dawn. Make sure you speak up because these folks have to hear you.
Also, percent, it's one of these games here, I guess, I'm saying, is, this depends on how many people are actually withdrawing from the pension at the time, too. It changes what your percentages and stuff. So in other words, you could be saying that you were putting seventy percent in all along, or whatever like that, and maybe you're, of late, if you had added five, six, seven more people.
Take your definite amounts.
Yes. And also, this is, our contribution is controlled by the state. They tell us what to take and evaluate them all. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you folks hearing this?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the fireman pension, we had a net pension liability of one million six-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand. It was sixty-four percent funded, consisted of twenty-five members, and we had a two thousand eighteen city contribution that wasn't covered by state aid of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand.
So basically, those were the slides that we presented, and to kind of summarize that up and talk a little bit about, you know, the health and the condition of Titusville, some things that you would, folks want to look at when you measure that is the fund balance. As Steve went over in one of those slides, we talked about that fund balance. You know, we're comparable when we look at other municipalities. We do have a pretty good fund balance. Another measure is the profit and loss, you know, between, and we look at that as a whole, you know, our opinions on the whole. Again, increase that this year and half. We look at debt. The city has member debt. It is in the sewer fund, but we had that to increase our infrastructure, so we have some new infrastructure in the sewer fund there. So when you look at, those are just some of the factors that you look at when you look at the financial condition of the city itself, and so we're in a pretty positive place there.
And speaking of that, we have one debt, and we're en route to pay that off next May. Correct me if I'm wrong. That's in the sewer department, and it is approximately two-point-two? Am I saying that correctly?
Two-point-two.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because I can't, these figures are, these are large figures, and it's, so two-point-two million dollars.
When I attended school on budgeting for government, they made a statement that the state likes to see ten to fifteen percent carryover in your, in your general fund. By ours being the number you quoted, seven-hundred-some-thousand, that puts us on the high end of that category, correct? So we should, we should be right where we should be. Correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Okay, so far, so good. So far, does anyone have any questions for our auditors as we continue to talk about this? Not yet. Okay, go on, please.
I think that was.
Yeah, that was in what we wanted to go over, so I didn't know if council had any questions for us.
Okay, I'd like you folks to know that me put together, city council put together some questions, and I'm going to read those questions, and if you folks wouldn't mind, you could discuss this a little bit. Number one question is, can you explain the requirements for municipal auditing and how it differs from a standard business audit? And it is, it is our understanding that auditing firms must have special training and certification greater than a standard CPA in order to provide audits for municipalities. Is that correct?
So in, I think it was on slide four that we went over, that was the government auditing standards, so a little bit higher standard than a regular financial audit. And yes, there are additional CPE requirements that we're required to have that are specifically related to that, and we go through a internal inspection within our firm every two years, and then we're inspected by an outside firm every third year, and you folks have our peer review letter related to that, which showed that we bashed it up.
This is what they call the O book. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep.
I'm going to reach back, and I'll join.
I would like to clarify, the reason why I have this as a point is because there's an influential person within the town that has questioned your credibility, and, you know, like, oh, they just, they just report on what was told to them. Okay, so how can you really trust them anyway? And that's why we wanted to have this clarified, you know, like, what are the standards and how are you rated, that kind of thing, to know that it is credible, and it isn't just, oh, well, the city council gave you these numbers, and this is what, you know, as if it does not hold weight. So we wanted that clarified.
Sure, and one of those standards are that we already planned in front of management and council, so, yeah, we are, we're doing that, and that's that, so.
Good. Okay, there was something else, one more, gentlemen. There was something else that was surgery today. No auditor has the ability to attest to the mega transfers from the city services fund to fund city hall at the rate over seventy-five percent is an acceptable standard practice. The only information the auditors have is what is provided to them. The city says they have X numbers of dollars in any given fund, X revenues and X expenditures. The annual audit is required by law, basically verifies that the balances agree with what they were given. This is not an in-depth audit that proves where each dollar comes and goes to, and whether or not those funds were obtained or spent appropriately under local, state, and federal laws and practices. Is that, is that a true statement?
I don't, yeah, we don't, I mean, we don't audit one-hundred percent.
Yeah.
I mean, we use random slide items, but as, as again was in our, in the slides there, you know, it's based on different projects and GASB standards.
Oh, I've had auditing experience with ISO nine thousand in manufacturing and stuff like that, and I've been trained in all aspects of that. But anyways, so in fairness, you have been our auditors for some time. It doesn't mean that every year you walk in and you pick up the same piece of paper. You take and you look at different aspects. This time you may audit this item. Next time you'll say, well, you know, they did pretty good on that, so now we can go. So you drill deeper into something else. Is that correct in the procedure?
That's right.
Yep. They changed the way we have to do audits, I think, back in two thousand eight because they changed the risk-based approach where every year, that's why I kind of mentioned at the beginning, where every year it's going to change based on audit areas, ongoing projects, and the sewer project. We dive deep into the sewer project when that was going on because that's a higher risk area where certain other things weren't. So it definitely changes from year to year where we're assessing what is risky for this year based on results from last year and communications at the beginning of the season.
And these results get filed with the state with DCD.
Correct.
Okay, because when you are, it is a requirement that if you take any kind of federal or state money, you have to take and say where it's going, how you're using it, and make sure that she was correct.
Yep, and then the years we didn't get enough federal money, we actually performed a single audit that was at the federal compliance level, which is even higher than government auditing standards, so.
So when you're talking about the risk base, do you feel that we are taking unfounded risks? Are we doing the right type of things? Just trying to make sure, you know, as Esther alluded to, that there are some that are making these comments, and I'm not sure that that, well, that's just a slanderous type of a thing as far as I'm concerned, but you folks are truly the independent ones.
Yep.
And I would like to know, and how you wish to word the thing, but anyways, how big a risk we are, and you do other municipalities and other authorities and stuff. How are we stacking up with that? Are we being, are we doing the thing properly? Are we taking risks that we shouldn't be taking? Are we open and transparent? I mean, you did say that you've had no problems working with management and everything like that. So I didn't know if you could comment on any of that.
Well, I think as far as, you know, risks, there, our risk assessment is at our level. You know, there is a risk assessment level that's supposed to be you as council and as administration that they go through and are assessing that. You know, we're not part of the management decisions, which makes us independent. But as far as, you know, we do review the minutes as part of our, our audit, and in that is the review of the financial reports that are approved by council and I believe are available, obviously, at the public meetings and or upon public request. So, you know, that's part of the transparency.
They may need your mic a little closer.
The, you know, that part's in there. As far as the budget, I believe that's open and available for public review. That's all, that's what's required in having it available, so.
For the public information, these auditors, when they come to City Hall, they're, they're there full-time for the better part of the week. I mean, this is not something they do in an hour. They're in City Hall days going through all this stuff.
Jim?
Yeah, aren't people supposed to state their name and address when speaking to council? This young lady over here didn't give her name and address. I just wondered why you didn't ask her to state her name and address.
Seriously?
Do you want me to state it? I can. Anna, Anna Sluggel is my name, and I live at, on the Albert Street.
Thank you.
In Titusville.
Thank you.
Jim, you didn't say your name.
James Elliott, three oh six North Franklin Street.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay.
Glad you're doing your job.
Jim, don't interrupt again.
Thank you.
I wanted to let you folks know, when we're, when we sit on council, we are not inside City Hall running City Hall. We hire a city manager, and we hire the finance director. Our job is not running city. They're city. Every year, for the last umpteen years, I've asked these folks how things are going because city, our city manager could deceive or could fool five council people. And I ask these folks how they're doing. So I'm going to ask you again, how are these folks doing? When you, when they come, when you come down?
Yeah, they really give us everything we need. You know, we.
You've not had a problem with them now.
We usually provide a list of items that we'll need based on, as we talked about, our risk approach. They get that information together. Obviously, that if we go along the audit, it can take different terms and paths depending on what we see and do. We've had absolutely no problems getting the information from these folks. They've been very helpful in doing that. As far as how are they doing, that's our opinion. You got a clean opinion with no findings or material losses.
Okay, we've had some, a lot, a lot of information out there regarding the water and sewer funds, the transfers, interfund transfers from the water and sewer to the general. Now, my question is, was there, do you see where we are excessive? Are we, are we doing something wrong with our interfund transfers?
We had no problem with that during the audit.
Okay.
Is this a process which, you also have other municipalities and authorities and stuff like that, so there's all these other transfers and things that did you, are we doing them in a similar fashion? I would imagine sometimes depending on the business, it might be just a little bit different, but you don't see any bells, whistles, flags, or anything like that? It's being done as others. Is that correct?
Yeah, everybody does it a little bit differently, but there, you know, there are other municipalities doing those types of transfers. Some of them are based on equipment usage, some based on space, some based on salaries.
And how we're doing ours is fine? There isn't an issue, there is an issue with that? What else?
One thing that people have to realize, that those transfers are going to be higher when you do more projects. If you look around the city, there's never been so many projects done that has to do with water and sewer issues. We, we have taken on projects that have been needed done for years. I mean, we, I don't even want to start naming them, but big projects, and a lot of these have been done with public works employees. Well, naturally, if they call, you know, you've got the cost of your workers and you've got the cost of material, if you're going to do more work, you're going to spend more money. So that money, if it's, if it's eligible to come out of the sewer fund, that's where it has to come from, and that's, that's where we pull that money. That's why those transfers are higher, and maybe they'd be higher some years than other years. It just depends on those projects, the size of the projects, the scope of the project, but in the end, it's a huge savings to the taxpayer. In the past, these didn't get done strictly because time you engineer the project and you go out to bid and you pay premium wages for it. That all doubles the cost of these projects. So what the public needs to understand is, you know, even though the transfers are higher, the projects, we're getting twice as much done for the money that we would have if we contracted those projects out. And plus, we're keeping, you know, we're keeping our local people jobs.
If we outsourced our water and our sewer department, and we paid for someone else to come in and do that work, you're going to be paying the same thing because that work needs to be done. Actually, you're paying, it would be higher because you're going to be paying a higher wage than what we're getting out of our men here in this town.
We've, due to attrition when we have retirees, we look for a specific type of person in public works. We're not just looking for labor. We're looking for people who can pour concrete and do it well. We're looking for people who can weld so that when we need welding, we can do it in-house, fabricating. And we have, we have grown to the point where we, we don't hardly hire anything out. Everything is done in-house to save money for the city. And that is the reason you see all this stuff, all this stuff getting done. It's a result of those people. They're very skilled. We have very skilled public works people, and they're hardworking. You know, and recently, we gave a two-and-a-half percent raise in the new contract. They deserve every bit of that two-and-a-half percent raise.
I heard a chirp.
An interruption is awful, is.
Oh. One other question, there was another statement that was flying out there. It says, based on recently audited reports of the city included pension funds, the city is currently insolvent and could easily be in bankrupt in the next five years, contrary to the rhetoric that's been. contrary to the rhetoric that's been spewed out." Are, are we at a, this is, are we serious here? Because I remember twelve years ago, we were talking about all that stuff. And I think you know that.
Right. Yeah, like I said, the funding condition based on, you know, some factors that you look at. And, you know, reiterate that fund balance, you have a positive fund balance, you had a positive increase in your, and this goes across. This isn't just the general funds. This is all funds, as, as Steve pointed out in there. Debt's minimal. Actually, like you said, if you're planning to pay that debt off, if that's part of your budgeted plan, that'll be paid off early. So that's good news. The pensions, as we talked, you know, they're, you know, sixty-two, sixty-four, that, you know, you look at, there's some guidelines there. I mean, you're obviously not at a hundred percent or ninety percent, but you're not in dire straits with that, and that's part of our.
We're not in dire straits with the pension.
Right, and that's, you know, part of the market, I mean, so that's.
I, I, I sit on both pension, excuse me, I sit on both pension boards as a liaison. And I, and I can tell you that we have, we have more retirees now, which puts a, a greater tax on that. Uh, so your, uh, actuarial, the state actuarial, then takes some looks at that. Weren't we at like seventy-three percent before, and then we dropped down to sixty-eight percent? Because of, it wasn't because we were not putting enough money in, it's just because there were more draw on the thing. And the draw was typically at higher rates. In other words, because they had good contracts that gave them extra bonuses or, or to that.
Like police, we have nine policemen on the force presently. We have twenty-two policemen drawing pensions. Well, that money has to come from somewhere, you know, so that, you know, if those investments aren't good, that, that has to pull on. Same in fire. We have six full-time firemen. We have eighteen drawing pensions. And they draw those pensions for the rest of their lives. So, you know, they're an actuary, what they do is they look at that. They estimate how long they figure people will live, and all that data goes into a database, and it spits out and says it'll take X amount of dollars to fund this account. If you take like the recent, couple of the recent retirees, uh, due to prior contracts, if they live to be age ninety, that one individual will draw one point six million dollars from pensions in their lifetime. That's only one individual. So when you factor all that in, you know, and, uh, there's big cities that are underfunded. I think, I think I read where Philadelphia is underfunded by twenty-seven billion, trillion, billion, billion, I guess. Huge, just a huge number. We're, we're not, we're not bad shape. We're really not. I'd love to be a hundred percent funded, but unless the, you know, if the stock market continues to, to go well, then we may get there. But it's, it's really more the stock market than it is the contribution from the city or the employees who have to contribute a, a share of.
And, and another thing I want you folks to realize, um, and this is not, not a slam against our employees. But years ago, no but, now, years ago, the contract for our police force, no, excuse me. Our police force, um, there was some verbiage put in there that allowed for a police officer at the last forty-five days of, of retire, of getting ready to retire, his, how, how many explain that? His pay bumped up forty percent.
If he gave that notice.
He gave, he had to give a notice, and his, he, he went from a, help me out there.
Like a, a review officer.
He went to a review officer.
Status for forty-five days. Then his pension was based on that salary.
So it went up forty percent.
What year, what year was that?
That was back in, I, I'm thinking it was the nineties, and it was taken out in, uh, um,
Six, seven?
Uh, Marion Knoll, and that, got that, Marion Knoll, got that removed.
Roger Gordon, Roger Gordon?
No, I can't say that. I can't say that, but I could say, like, all I could say, it was back in the, I'm thinking it was the nineties. It was nineties. And there was about, um, twenty, I think there's twenty-six police officers that benefi- benefited from that. This isn't a slam against our police force. We have, we had, I'll tell you, the best police officers, in my opinion, we have fantastic police officers. But we are going to pay when administrative, administration allows that type of verbiage to be put in there. So we are now obligated, and, and people complain about the pensions. Listen, folks, it isn't this crew that did it. But we're trying to figure out how to take and fix it. And thank God, we had a, a city manager a few years ago that got that verbiage out. But again, it isn't a slam against our, our officers. I mean, who in their right mind would turn something like that down? Anyway, questions from the audience?
Actually, I have a question for the auditor here. Can you tell me how much the total revenue is for the water sewage refuge department? The revenue, the actual, the total that you bring in, between the three?
Looks like about three point five million.
Okay, thank you.
Now's the time, folks, to ask questions because you've seen a whole lot of, a lot of propaganda going around this town. So ask the auditors anything. Okay.
So, so compared to other cities, we're doing pretty good?
Yeah, we're looking at, one of the measures is fund balance, and that's a lot better. If you look at that, is there any idea?
One time I asked, I believe, do you, uh, do you see how many months that we are solvent or like in the black or something? We've got our, you know, monies, or we, few months or whatever, like, if, if tax money stopped today, can I?
Yeah, about three months, four, three months.
Three months.
So if all monies came in today, it's about three months.
And that's.
That's pretty standard, and that's the very measure, there's the ten, fifteen criteria, yeah, you guys are right in there.
Well, I guess I have one final question.
Yes, sure.
If you do find something that's amiss, what is the process of alerting those? Uh, I imagine this to City Council would be one method, okay? But if you actually had somebody within that you're working with, and they themselves were, let's say, maybe something not ethical, uh, how would you go about and alert that? So, I mean, do you, do you alert the state? Do you alert the City Council? Do you, what is the process? So, anything that you find amiss gets resolved?
So typically, uh, if there's something that is, that, that we think looks not right, or something, if that's with the underneath management, then we would go to management. Um, that's typically how our standards require that. If it's something with management, it would come to council. Um, if there's any recommendations, which we have had in the past, which, uh, management has always corrected, which is why we, we don't have any of those. Um, if like Steve was talking about, we had a, uh, federal funds over seven fifty that were required to report, um, differently, uh, those would be included in the report as a finding or, or a material weakness. Um, right now, with the government auditing standards, it would, if there was something within there, that would be reported in that letter as well. Um, if it, if, if it elevated to what would be considered a significant deficiency or material weakness. If it was just a recommendation, um, you know, we would discuss that with management and you counsel.
And I noticed that you, I'm sorry, I didn't, I said the last one, but I apologize. But, but I noticed that when we went through some of this stuff, even, even like, let's say, uh, city proper that is considered salvage or anything like that, you've looked at that, and that's been addressed properly.
That's part of the audit.
That's part of the audit. So, it's, it's, because, uh, tonight we were going to talk about something, and we have some people that, we have some, what's the, uh, uh, a police cruiser we no longer use, and somebody could bid on that type of thing. So we are doing that in a proper process that is defined by the state and, right, okay? Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Um, because the negativity being circulated through the town is one of the reasons we're having this meeting. Um, a pamphlet went out, which I addressed a couple of council meetings ago, called City in Crisis to a lot of the homeowners in town, and portraying that we were practically in dire straits. You know, and if we don't do something, we're in big trouble. Um, it's my understanding, to go along with, um, the fact that our debt is going to be paid off by next May, it's also my understanding, and I would like Larry or you to clarify, that we don't take out loans to purchase and fund projects. Is that correct? Um, I know the house was purchased cash payment, is that right?
Yep.
So would you clarify that, Larry, that we're not in debt to people? We're able to pay cash for projects?
Yeah, all the equipment that we have, everything that we have is involved in cash. We have not, with a loan that was already committed to at the start of the sewer project, when I started in twenty eleven, uh, that was the only loan that's been taken out since twenty eleven. And that loan was paid off as soon as it was allowed to be paid off. That was part of the grant process. You had to take out a loan. The minute that they said that that loan could be paid off, we paid that loan off. And we have not had any debt from that day forward, new debt.
That's amazing. Thank you.
We have, we paid, we paid cash for our police vehicles. We paid ca- cash for, um, trucks, cars. We paid cash for all the renovations on, on the buildings. And let me tell you something, when we took over leisure service, our leisure service, the buildings, parks, and recreations were in deplorable shape. We have been fixing those buildings up, and I would encourage every last one of you, take a ride, get out of your vehicle, and walk around and see what it has been doing. We put in a park down there. Thank, thank the Lord, we've had a lot of people that have, um, volunteered and have, have given us monies towards that. But I'll tell you one thing, the community has really stepped up. We've had a lot, a lot of volunteerism, a lot of volunteer individuals that come forth, have given money, uh, but we pay cash for everything.
That's amazing.
You're, you're, I'm telling you, your city manager is a, a guy, I know he hates, he hates being, um, um, told this, but let me tell you something, we are fiscally responsible. You put us in here to do that, and we do just that. In spite of what you're hearing.
Thank you, Larry.
That's right. This stuff, Larry's done a phenomenal job. Jamie?
James Miller Petroleum Center wrote, "One of the things that I took away from information that was shared was the budget process distributes, um, an estimated amount or percentage of one's wages and fringe benefits towards funds." One of the questions I have is, why haven't you gone to, uh, actual hours charged to those departments and then adjusted one way or another the budget amount that you put out there? The second question that I have, um, the number presented by the auditors for two thousand and eighteen, seventy-five thousand dollars was transferred from the refuse department to the general fund. The refuse department is, my understanding, is a contracted service. What did the city do for the taxpayers at a rate of seventy-five thousand dollars for a year on a contracted service?
That number's probably light, to be honest with you. We go out and we pick up, people call in all the time. They have things they need picked up, such as shrub clippings, those type of things. We pick those up. Public Works picks those up. Uh, we have the girl that sits in and takes calls all day long. Part of her pay is part of that. She takes calls from people, complaints against the contracted garbage people. There's a whole lot. I would say seventy-five is truly is probably light for that. There's a lot of labor, labor things involved with that process. Your first question, I, I forgot.
Well, it's the, it's the budget versus an actual. So you say there's a lot of projects going on, more than regular. But you budgeted a particular amount to come from the water and the sewer. Why don't you go and take your actual hours recorded and go back against and adjust that number? If you use more time than expected, draw off more money. If you use less, put it back.
That could be done. It would be very, very labor intensive. I'd probably have to have an employee, another employee to do that. I, I just, I just weigh, do we really want to hire another employee and pay them benefits just to track every movement? And the time lost, you know, Public Works, when the guys go out, they may be working on a, a storm sewer grade. Then they might get called off of that job, and they may have to go fly traffic. I mean, they're just moved all over the place. Every time they would move, at the end of the day, they write that on a work board. And all of that would have to be transposed into some kind of a spreadsheet so that we would know what that exact number is. It'd be very, very labor intensive. That's, that's the main reason. I, I just, we try to run as lean as we can, especially with administrative staff. Uh, we, our administrative staff, uh, you know, is so much different than it was years ago.
Seriously, um, where do you live? Who did, who, maybe question. Where do you live?
I live in Cherry Tree Township.
He named his address.
So, you're not in town?
I asked the vendor.
Yeah, because in, in Titusville, in Titusville Town, those guys who pick up the garbage, they are golden. So, you know, in Cherry Tree Township, it's not, it doesn't apply.
Anyhow, that's, that's the reason. It's, it's the way, like I say, we have run lean. Uh, you know, that we used to pay, the city used to pay a finance director full-time wages and benefits. Now, our finance director is part of, she does three other job duties, complete jobs. And her finance pay is only eighty-five hundred, I think, a year to do the whole job, where it used to cost thirty thousand dollars.
Oh, no, 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 it was more than that.
It's just, yeah, that wouldn't include benefits. Benefits and all was up to sixty thousand. But those, those are the kind of cuts, we really do not have staff to do that unless we start hiring people back again.
We run a lean and mean operation.
You don't, you don't need bigger government.
No, you don't need bigger government.
And, and so, uh, excuse me, Bill, but to the auditors, this is typical of how we're doing things. Do you have some companies, or some people that you have that's got everything right down to the minute, which, that is an accounting thing?
You don't have that?
Or are you generalized? What, what, and, and I ask you, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but basically is that some are not going to take and believe what we have to say, but you folks are truly independent. And you, you audit other municipalities and other authorities. So what is the general?
Let me see, not everybody does it the same, but it is typically estimates based on, you know, like I said, some of them are data use or rental equipment, some of them, the, the general operations on the equipment, the old rent back and forth. Some of them are based on personnel costs, which, you know, are based on time studies or, you know, where things are at. Some are based on project-based. It just, it just depends. But, you know, the, the numbers that you have done, we have looked at, and.
Our numbers add up, which we're just.
And then you have documentation for those that we have looked at, and that's.
You hear that, folks?
It's up to you, it's up to you folks to decide how you're doing that after you.
Okay. But you don't have, there's not a problem with it. Okay, Bill, I know you want.
Yeah, I, I guess my only comment was, while we, we are aware of the fact that as we distribute these funds, it's probably not perfect, okay? But short of, as Larry said, hiring another person to keep track of all that, I, I, I don't think that's wise money to spend with the taxpayers.
It is reviewed here.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, we set down a budget time, and, uh, we talk about what projects are planned for that next budget. And, uh, we talk about the hours that it would spend in those, we discuss all those aspects, and then we, we make adjustments for that reason. If there's more water projects, naturally the transfer's going to be higher in water based on how size of the project. Or sewer, or refuse is, is kind of standard. That's, that, it, it'll go up a little bit just due to inflation, the inflationary things, but refuse doesn't raise a lot annually. It's, it's more stable than the other two, and actually because it's not project-based.
Okay, council, were you good?
I'm good. Yes.
What, just one more little wee question. Do you know of any municipality near here, around here, that's close to being out of debt or is debt-free?
Um, no, I think we looked at the, uh, we.
Yeah, we looked at most of the ones that were around here.
They're all more than you.
Yeah.
I think the thing you have to look at too, when you look at that, is, is the debt plus what project, you know, we, we just alert sewer project and, and have low debt, you know, it's, that's part of what you have to look at too, is, is where your expenses are, what your plan is for that, so.
Right.
But the fact that, uh, you do have low debt and have paid for a lot of your capital landings.
So we're not in crisis?
So management planning, so management planning is okay?
Okay, um, Jim?
I just had one more question. Uh, you said you were reading from a letter that you received in the mail. Can you tell me where you received that letter?
Jim, I'm not going there. Um.
That's what this meeting is orchestrated over.
This was sent to me in, in an email, and anybody's welcome to see that when we're done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, you folks are welcome to leave. Unless you want to stick around, you're welcome to stick around also. And we want to thank. And we want to thank you for what you do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, uh, you just hold on and stay put because they are finished the meeting here. Um, we're gonna move on to the operational reports, is there a, what's that? Oh, is there a motion to accept the audit report, I'm sorry.
Make that motion there.
Dawn and Bill. Okay, um, call the roll?
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Is there a motion to accept the operational reports of the building inspector, the finance, fire, human resources, risk management, treasurer, police, public works, and water, wastewater for the month of two, May, two thousand nineteen, estimated placed on file?
Make that motion there.
Dawn and Bill, any questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Is there a motion to accept and placed on file the minutes of the Benson Library Board at five twenty-one? The housing authority at five twenty-one?
Soon.
Dawn, Bill, and Dawn.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay, Dawn?
I didn't know, I was giving you an opportunity.
Comments or questions? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Is there a motion to ratify the bill listing warrants dated five thirty-one, six seven, six thirteen, six twenty-one?
Motion to ratify there.
Donald?
Sir.
Bill, for everyone that's new here, I want to just let you know real quick, Larry sends out the bill listing warrants to us throughout the month. We have the opportunity to, uh, look on, look them over, we looked them over. I gave the rest, you crushed a shirt on that one, we look them over, we had any questions, we shoot them out and we ask them here.
As well as the controller looks them over, is that not correct?
There is our proper checks and balances, yes, the controller looks them over. So they do it, send them to us, this controller looks them over, and then the auditor gets them. Call the roll?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number eleven of two thousand nineteen, the range hood donation?
Motion to adopt there.
I'll second it, Larry?
Resolution number eleven of two thousand nineteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to authorize the donation by the city to the Titusville redevelopment authority of one range hood unit.
And, um, we vote on that first. Okay, um, any comments or questions?
This is something that we've had and have not used for how many years?
Years.
Has been still in the box.
We're donating a range hood to, um, the redevelopment authority to be used down in the, um, incubators. They're gonna, uh, they're gonna be putting a little restaurant of some sort down there and they're gonna use the range hood for that. We're just paying things forward, helping each other out. Call the roll?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number twelve of two thousand nineteen, the sale of city vehicle?
I don't like that motion.
Billy, Bill?
I'll second that.
Donald?
Resolution number twelve of two thousand nineteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville, authorizing the sale or scrap of surplus city vehicle. Whereas the city of Titusville has certain property which is no longer used in the city's operations. This, uh, pertains to the sixty-nine American La France fire truck.
Okay, call the roll?
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number thirteen of two thousand nineteen, the city council meeting rolls? I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Bill?
Resolution number thirteen of two thousand nineteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, establishing the rules governing the functions of the council of the city of Titusville and the committees thereof.
Comments or questions?
This is quite common with all other municipalities that we are aware, correct?
Correct. Call the roll?
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Fee changes, is there a motion to introduce council bill number five of two thousand nineteen on the first reading? Uh, you'll make it and I'll second it?
Council bill number five of two thousand nineteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to amend sections nine oh four point nine nine, eleven eleven point nine nine, and nineteen oh five point nine nine of the codified ordinances of the city of Titusville, to revise the penalties for violations of certain city ordinances.
And those are four?
One is, uh, well, I don't have it right.
You don't have, okay.
One has to do with, uh, the code if, if somebody's ordered to demo a house demolition.
Throw the weeds.
What's that?
Throw the weeds.
Throw the weeds? I, I have.
High grass.
Grass, snow and demolition.
Okay, we discussed that last week and we don't have that in our packet for the night. Alrighty, call the roll?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna turn it over to public, public participation. Your name and, uh, address, please.
Terry Waltman, Dawn wrote, um, we were at the council meeting in May about our water bill and you got your letter.
Uh-huh.
And I, I just, I don't agree, um, and I just wanted to talk to you about this. I pulled up, you told, well, I, we were told we could call nine one one. Okay, so I pulled up nine one one, what an emergency and nine one one is, excuse me, uh. An emergency is a situation that requires obedient assistance from police, fire department or ambulance. And then I pulled up from your website what an emergency situ- situation is for a water shut-off posing risk or personal injury or property damage. Now, as I said, the water was underground, so it's not posing anybody personal injury, it's not causing any property damage. So a normal person would not think to call nine one one because the offices were closed. And that is our biggest issue, we're paying for water that we have no control over. We didn't, yeah, we couldn't do anything. Uh, we couldn't get ahold of anybody, we couldn't, we never thought to call nine one one because who would have thought to call nine one one? Because there's a water leak underground. And in your letter you said that, and I, this is what I don't understand, how was everybody, all, all our neighbors paying for that water? That, anyhow, the, I have the letter here.
Yeah, it costs, it costs money to pump that water and treat it with chlorine and pump it all to residents. So naturally it's based on use, use, that fee is based on what it costs to reduce that water. So if that water run into the ground because a pipe wasn't repaired on your property, your neighbor would be paying for a share of that because he's paying, you know, that's divided up amongst everyone. So everyone would pay a full share.
We pay for your water bill every month, even when we have no tenants in our properties. We still pay that water bill even though there is not one drop of water running through.
You don't pay water usage, you pay water baser.
Our water bill doesn't go down, whether we have a tenant or not, our water will not go down. It's the same month, it's almost the same, it doesn't, it's like eighty-six dollars. We have empty, we have a couple empty places and it doesn't.
Yeah, if it's estimated one month, the next month should be less when it's red. I have to renew your account, I don't have that.
And, you know, you said the pipes underground, well, at one time the water meter was closer to the house and then it got moved way out there. So at one time those pipes were city pipes. How are we supposed to know, they're completely underground, how are we supposed to know that they're damaged? That's how, that, our biggest thing, we had no control over this.
They really aren't city pipes, anything, the city's only responsible to the shut-off valve, whether their meters inside or outside.
But at one time the shut-off valve was?
No, the meter, the meter usually be inside probably, it was moved outside. But it's still a responsibility from the shut-off end.
Okay, well, I, I just, I don't agree because there is no way we could have got ahold of anybody. If we could have, we would have, and then we wouldn't have that huge wa- and the water would have never drained, gone into the ground. That is our biggest thing, if we could have got ahold of somebody on Friday, there would have been thousands and thousands of water that would have never gone into the ground. And I don't think anybody, any regular person would have been able to say, oh, well, we should call nine one one. Because that's what we were told we should have done. And if the meter was in the house where it was at one time, we wouldn't even, we, nobody would have known there was a water leak. And that water still would have run into the ground.
What was the period of time this?
Is, is the water being fixed now? The, we had it shut off, we have it. No, because it's gonna cost us thousands and thousands of dollars. Because we've, we're still not sure where that water would get, because it's somewhere between the building. And the street, and I, the property, I mean, that is a huge, huge area. Um, the water, we got noticed on Thursday before Thanksgiving, or Easter. But we couldn't get ahold of anybody to shut it off until morning.
Why didn't you call Public Works? Why didn't you call Public Works?
We tried, they were closed, they were closed.
But I guess what I'm saying is, how many, for me, this is information, how many days passed, okay? And there was water, you know, between, let's say you got a long weekend, three days. In three days, how many gallons of water left there?
We, we were the ones who notified him. Yeah, but, and as soon as we got notified, you, we got notified, what? Thursday afternoon, late afternoon. We went in Friday morning. So as soon as we got notified, we tried to take care of it.
But what I, what I don't understand is, are you saying the leak was open for three days?
No, the leak can be, and we'll pay up until we were notified, we don't have a problem with that. But what we have a problem is, we could not get ahold of anybody to shut that water off.
For a couple days?
For three days.
Yeah.
And we're, that's, we're feeling like we're getting penalized because your offices were closed.
We can calculate that because they went out and got it re-in when they turned the water off. Okay, I, I mean, I agree with you.
Thank you.
I, but not just one.
But you were, but, but Mr. Enros, what I understand, asking me, he, um, forgave sewer rates?
Yes. Because nothing went down in sewer.
Yeah, yeah, and by ordinance, by ordinance, we're not allowed to take and forego payment on water.
Okay, I mean, in three days and they can't get ahold of anyone?
That's, that's our biggest issue, for three days we could not get ahold of anybody. We did, we did our, we did our part to try to get ahold of somebody as soon as we know, as soon, you know, it was late afternoon on Thursday when we got to notice station. He went in, Ron went in Friday morning, first thing, he was there first thing when you were, well, we thought the office would be open to let somebody know, please go up and shut the water off. And we worked, or we couldn't get ahold of anybody till Monday morning. And that is our biggest issue.
Was there anybody in that home?
Yes.
Yes.
And it identified to you that there was water in that?
It's under drowned, in the front yard somewhere. And our front, the front yard is how long, how big, it's a huge.
Let's see, in probably fifty, sixty feet.
So, and we still have no idea where that water leak is.
Many, many years, I, many, many years ago, I had replaced my own water line and it is red, it was, you know, it's dry, it's ready to repair.
We've already replaced some, but, you know, fifty, fifty, sixty feet, we don't know where the water leak is and we, you know, we know we're gonna have to eventually replace it. But that, that's not my point, as, my point is paying for something that we have no control over. And that is my point, you're saying we have to fix, we should have fixed it. So we should go.
We're all responsible.
I understand you're saying we're all responsible, but you're saying that we should have known that there was gonna be a water leak and we should have replaced those pipes?
Okay, council, it's, it's our decision, what do you say? I need to hear from you, Bill. Because it's our decision, he can't make that.
I can't, I can't hear from ordinance without specific instruction from council. I, I just cannot wave a magic wand and make people's bills go away. The auditor, pick up on that immediately.
Yes.
But have we forgiven other people's water in the past?
My knowledge, never.
Has this happened before?
Oh, yes.
Has somebody could get ahold of you for three days?
Oh, yeah, we have, we, we have these issues constantly, in all honesty.
We've, we've had.
Water lines are old, everybody has these breaks.
We've had people that have, didn't shut off the water in their house, the house froze and they came back months later and they had to pay that water bill, didn't it not?
Oh, yeah.
But that, I mean, they, did they try to contact us then immediately like we did?
Well, I mean, whether somebody contacts or not, it's still, it's, it was on their, whether it's negligence or whatever you want to say, on their part, but.
But it wasn't negligence, our part.
Please, what we'll do, what we'll do Terry is let them, let them think about it.
We need to talk to, let's, let's see how they.
Yeah, okay, and, uh, we'll let them think about it and ponder it and then make a decision and we'll get with you.
Thank you. I have a, a point of clarification, it seems like the issue part we hear too is the Friday to Monday, like couldn't get ahold of anyone. What is the, um, isn't there a non-call person for Water Works in case of an, an emergency? Like, how is that handled over the weekend if you can't get ahold of someone at the office?
They call nine one one, nine one one we call, the Public Works Director, and the police, and when they turn, call Public Works, yeah.
So there's no one, uh, listening to messages as far as a non, like, like she said, we wouldn't think of it as an emergency, you know?
If the, if the water was still at the house, yes, I would have thought of the, as an emergency. But the water was going underground, you know?
It's the same every weekend, there's nobody monitoring Saturday and Sunday either, that extra day, I mean, every weekend is the same scenario. If somebody's broke on a Friday, it would, it would continue to run until Monday. And, and in all honesty, if it was, you know, a call out due to contracts, if we called somebody out even to shut that water off, that's three hours of pay if it takes them two minutes. So that would cost the taxpayers, you know, probably, I don't know, a time and a half or three hours, whatever that is. Hundred bucks, hundred fifty bucks.
Terry, what we'll do is we'll let, we'll get the other councils' opinions, um, and they'll let you know what they have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, we're going to adjourn and I want to thank everyone for coming. Please get involved, wait a minute, just a minute, but I'll still say what I'm gonna say and then I'm gonna let him talk. Please get in, get involved with these meetings because it, we need you. We need people that, we want to hear you, we want to hear your voice, you gotta get involved, go on.
I just have a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the, to the people's attention. I received a, um, letter here from the redevelopment authority and they wanted me to read it, provided that the council did decide to give them the range hood for their, uh, incubator project. Uh, it reads, uh, "Dear City Council, I wish to thank you for giving us the kitchen hood for the retail incubator. As with most projects, it's tight for funds and every expense cut is a great help. Not having to purchase the hood will definitely help us reduce the deficit. The incubator has been named the Mercantile at Town Square and the MERC for short. We are anxious to get the MERC completed, but unfortunately won't be able to open by the oil festival like we had hoped. But it will be open during that time for the public to see what we have accomplished so far. Once again, thank you for your support of our project and please don't hesitate to call if you would like to check out the process of the MERC. Lori Baker, Executive Director." Be gone. And the second thing that I would like to bring to everybody's attention, we have a, we have a twelve-inch water line down by the Water Works plant that has a, a pretty bad leak. Uh, we are scheduled to fix this leak, we decided to fix it in the middle of the night as to not interrupt service to a lot of residents. This, this will entail, everyone on the outrouting north from McKinney Street out will have no water from midnight till four AM tomorrow night, starting tomorrow night at midnight. The pipe, we have, we have to shut it down because we have nowhere to shut it off. So we have to shut everybody's off in order to make the repair and get it back up, so. Uh, probably nobody will notice it, but we want to let everybody know if you're up at midnight to four in the morning, you might not have any water.
That will affect the Walmart people then?
Yes, and any of the industry people or businesses, we will personally call them, I'm not done knowing. But for the public, it's gonna be in the newspaper also tomorrow.
Yes, and it's gonna happen tomorrow at midnight?
Tomorrow at midnight.
Okay. Uh, is there, did I, wait a minute, did I make that, did somebody make that motion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Donald?
Second.
Bill? Call the roll?
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. I want to thank everyone for coming. Appreciate it.